Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending this board meeting here at Saint Charles Middle School. I am Kaylee Fox. I am a junior at Marion County High School and I am a student ambassador. My parents are Brad Fox and Michelle Fox. And this is your newly Saint Charles Middle School Student Ambassadors. And they will now lead you in a pledge followed by a moment of silence. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you make say your prayers?
Okay, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, superintendents. Welcome members of the board and all guests. My name is Emily Garner and I'm a sixth grade member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Justin Cassie Garner and my career goal is to become a pediatrician. My favorite thing about Saint Charles is all the extracurricular activities and opportunities for every and all students. We want to welcome you all here tonight. And to begin, we are going to explain what we have, what the Junior Knights of the Round Table has planned for the remainder of the school year. Recently, we've had the opportunity to attend a conference, a training, at the Crown Center, at the Area of Technology Center, led by the Marion County, the Marion County High School Student Ambassadors, with the guidance of Mr. Troy Benningfield and Ms. Lori Followay. We learned all about elevator speeches and public speaking, different types of speech depending on whom you are addressing, whether it be formal or casual, etiquette, formal or casual dress, and other important life skills. We also received our very own Junior Knights of the Round Table t-shirt. We want to thank Ms. Slosser, Mr. Benningfield, Ms. Followay, Ms. Grivens, and Ms. May for bringing all these opportunities to serve our school and community.
Hello, my name is Brooke Newgatty and I'm a sixth grader member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Greg and Jill Gaddy. My career goal is to be a vet. My favorite thing about Saint Charles is all the opportunities and after-school activities.
I'm Paige Masterson, a sixth grade member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Jason and Kirsty Masterson. My career goal is to be a chef. My favorite thing about Saint Charles is the teachers that teach all of my classes.
My name is Sarah Blanchard and I'm a seventh grade member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Eric and Tonya Blanchard. My career goal is to be a dentist. My favorite thing about Saint Charles is the welcoming environment and all the respectful students and staff.
My name is Madison Ford. I'm a seventh grade member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Michael Ford and Sarah Ford. My career goal is to be a professional basketball player. And my favorite thing at Saint Charles is all the sports because I play basketball and volleyball.
Hi, my name is Bella Spalding and I'm a seventh grade member of the Junior Knights of the Round Table. I'm the daughter of Jimmy and Stephanie Spalding. My career goal is to become a physical therapist. My favorite thing about Saint Charles is the small student teacher ratio.
My name is Seth Caldwell. I'm an eighth grade member of the Student Ambassadors here at Saint Charles Middle School. My career goal is to become a lawyer and a bestselling author. And my favorite thing about Saint Charles is the helpful teachers and our kind and loving staff.
Hello, my name is Zachary Essex. My parents are Michelle and Donald Essex. All of my career goals is to become an engineer. And my favorite thing about Saint Charles is the amazing staff in faculty, such as Ms. May, Ms. Grivens, and some of my other teachers, that's there in the corner.
Hi, my name is Samuel Thompson. I'm the son of Jeff and Patricia Thompson. My career goal is to become an architect. And my favorite thing about Saint Charles is all the advanced classes, such as algebra that are available here.
First, for a school service, we are saying after-school each Monday to assist the elementary students who come to our school to switch buses in the afternoon. We read a book on the smartboard to the students until they wait for their bus to pick them up. In order to do this, we collaborate with the best senior teacher, Ms. McCall and Ms. May, to make sure that this service would be helpful. Because we know that reading is the foundation for success, we felt that this is an opportunity for students to be learning while being entertained at the same time. This will continue until the end of the school year.
Another service that's similar to what Sarah spoke about is tutoring after-school at West Mary Elementary School for homework and reading books for students that need help if they don't get extra help at home. And to make, have them motivated to complete their work. This would happen every day that I ride the bus home.
A community service that we'll be providing is games and activities that the elderly will learn. We feel this is an opportunity to make the elderly feel special and appreciative. Sometimes we'll bring those facilities, they can feel lonely and want to help people. We will be doing this towards the end of January.
We are also planning a recycling initiative in which we ask all the students to bring in as many bottle caps as possible that we will collect and turn in so that we can make a bench that we can put on the school campus for any students who want a relaxing place to read a book.
My community service project is can food drive. Every student here at Saint Charles Middle School will be asked to bring in one can of any food of their choice. They'll be asked to turn it in to the office area. And then we will collaborate with Mr. Gabberry and we'll deliver them to the Community Service Center in Lebanon.
We are planning to have a school dance before Easter. The proceeds will go towards college type visits and supplies for a glow-in-the-dark Easter at Kent for Marion Peter School, West Mary Elementary. We are collaborating with Mr. Gabberry, Family Resource Center, to plan for the secret.
The Junior Knights of the Ambassadors will be participating in an April cleanup day to provide community service to some elderly. We plan to go into a neighborhood in Lebanon and assist with picking up limbs and cleaning up yards for spring. We also will begin a book study of order with Missy Lane from the Marion County Public Library. This book will advise to handle difficult situations with maturity and being sensitive with those who are different. Also, we will see how important simple acts of kindness are to people. Being an ambassador will allow us to provide school and community services to help people.
At the beginning of May, we will begin a book swap where you can bring in a book and get a new book. We're doing this because we know reading is important and it will help provide a new book for kids to read over the summer and hopefully it'll also spark conversations between kids about their books.
At the end of the school, lots of students seem to clean out their lockers and throw in more than any unused school supplies in the trash. We have decided that we will have a collecting area for students to drop off any supplies and materials that's still or in good condition so that we can offer those students who need supplies for the summer months or the fall. Also, throughout the school year, we will bring the students representing Saint Charles Middle School in leadership roles by giving tours of our school to visitors and new students and assisting them in getting acquainted with our school. That's what we have planned for the remainder of the school year. We want to thank you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to be here this evening and sharing the great things of our Saint Charles Middle School.
You all did a great job and we hope that you will consider being a student ambassador when you get to Marion County High School. The next item on our agenda is our Oath of Office for our three newly elected board members. I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Higgins to come forward.
I'll go come over and stand up so you can raise your hand and everybody get a picture of you. And at the end, I'll say, "Do you solemnly swear?" And you say, "I do." Okay. Raise your right hand. "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of Marion County School Board Member according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of the state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offended. So help me God, do you solemnly swear?"
I do.
Congratulations.
There's one more. We're gonna play music just to commit it to that.
Now you're gonna get blood.
I think this is a little different. Same thing Jimmy did, just saying I solemnly swear. "I being duly sworn says that he is eligible under law to serve as a member of the Board of Education, that he or she will not, while serving as a member of such Board, become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the Board, and that he will not in any way influence the hiring or appointment of district employees except in the hiring of superintendent of schools and/or the school board attorney."
The next item on the agenda is the election of the chairman. At this term, I would take nominations for a chairman of Marion County Public Schools School Board. And this chairmanship will be for a period of two years based on board policy.
Superintendent, I would place the name of Robert "Blitch" Cecil in the nomination for board chair.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Do we have any other nominations? I would say that the nominations have ceased. And with that, do we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. And it's open to you, Mr. Cecil. Chairman Cecil, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion on the election of the vice chairman. I would make a motion for Kaylin Reed.
I'll say it.
Is there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay, now that I'm through, now y'all have to have a little patience with me when I go through this list. That's all I can say. So the next item is item six, which is communicating. Oh, I'm sorry. Item six, that's what I'm saying, have a little patience. We need to have a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make the motion. Take it down. I need a second.
I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, number seven is the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Cecil. First item on my superintendent's report is leadership. Just to remind folks that our leadership team is continuing to study a leader's guide for 21st century learning and turning high-class schools into high-performing. And I did just want to make a note and let the board members know that mid-year, I did make a revision about our leadership team meetings. We are having a monthly meeting now with all administrators, including assistant principals and our Phase Two Leadership Now applicants. And the reason being is that we believe that it's really important to grow leaders in our district. And I don't know if you all have been watching the news or keep up with some of these kinds of things, but there's not a lot of folks majoring in education these days. And definitely not a lot of folks majoring in the administrative part of education. So I believe it's very important for us to grow our administrators. So I'm really pleased to be able to do that. Also, just to let folks know is we also have a curriculum, instruction, and assessment meeting once a month, and we do that by grade length, grade bands. And we do that one week, we do elementary, and another week we do secondary school. So really pleased about that. And our leadership team at the central office meets each Monday. The first thing I want to also talk about is excellent teaching and powerful learning. We have started our second round of learning walks. And for those of you that are unfamiliar with our learning walk, that is an opportunity for us to go in and actually learn from one another. Entire leadership team goes in, even Mr. Spalding goes in, and we do a facility walk. We look at all the things that we can do to help schools and help teaching and learning. Next Thursday and Friday, instructional leaders and some teachers and instructional coaches from our district have been invited by the Department of Education to present about what we are doing in our school systems, about our professional learning communities, which for most of you, you're probably saying, "What is a professional learning community?" But it's a small group of people working together to look at data, to make sure that we're making good decisions. So I think that's an honor for our district to be represented in this. And so we've already met and I'm very pleased. And it's not just that the superintendent is presenting, but it is a group of staff members from Marion County Public Schools. So very excited about that opportunity. Our teachers are jumping in, working on the new science standards. I'm sure Senator Higdon has heard a lot about the change in assessment and accountability. And our teachers have jumped in and we're starting to work with that group course task. And Calvary Elementary, something else that we should be celebrating is they have been recognized as an exemplary Kentucky system of interventions and RTI, which is Response to Interventions, in the following areas. And I'm not going to read all those areas, but the reason I wanted to display those on my report is that not everyone is being recognized for all of those areas. And response to intervention is basically what it sounds like, is that schools respond when children aren't learning at high levels. And they provide interventions to ensure that we do have that powerful learning piece. And so our district has done a lot of work over the last couple of years on that intervention piece. And isn't it awesome when somebody from the outside comes in, observes what we're doing, and recognizes us for that work? So congratulations, Ms. McGrady, to you and your staff. And I'm sure we'll all grow because of that. Our mid-year evaluations are being completed in January. Student voice surveys are actually a part of the teacher evaluations where we actually give our students a voice in what's going on in the classroom. And live feedback sessions are continuing and writing. And what that means is that we actually have students writing in the classroom. We have several staff members that go in and provide individual feedback to that student to help them grow. So it's not that they turn in their papers, the teacher's taking home, grade them, a couple of days later they get that feedback. We still do that, but it's very effective when we have this live feedback and it does make a difference. The next area I want to talk about is high expectations. And obviously, our six big dreams are definitely a part of high expectations. I want to remind everyone about our fourth annual spring summit, April the 13th. Save the date. Last year, we had our unveiling of the Dream Bus. Our student ambassadors did a great job and we're looking forward to hearing them tell the story again of what's going on in Marion County Public Schools with our six big dreams. One of our six big dreams is learning begins at birth. And we are very pleased to announce that we are continuing to have a lot of success with our board learning grant at Glasscock Elementary. I know that Ms. Downs is an active part of that. Her and the cabinet are doing a great job supporting that. And it's fantastic to see families coming to school before the children come to school. It's a great way to make that connection and to give them some help in making sure their kids are ready to come to school, universal preschool. I think it's very exciting. And you can see, we have 194 students in our district that are a part of a preschool program. And I know one of the things that we talked about when we started this is we didn't want to do anything to take away from our private centers. And as you can see, everyone is represented there. And we generally have in a freshman class about 250 students. So if you've got 194 students attending a preschool, we're getting really close there. And as you all know, that brain development from zero to five is huge. And you know, when you want students to be college and career-ready, that's where it starts. That doesn't start their senior year. So very pleased that our community has made an emphasis on that. Our one-to-one technology, I really just have to brag about our district right here. You know, when we started talking about one-to-one technology, a lot of people says, "Well, we all have a device, kids have a device in their hand." But the question is, if children have a device in their hand and teachers have a device in their hand, what does that look like in the classroom? How are we integrating that into our classroom work? Last year, we had our first annual Innovative Institute. And this year, we have our second one. Our guest speaker will be Daniel Couch. He's the Associate Commissioner of the Department of Education. And then he will be walking down to our next-gen lab at Marion County High School and he will be hosting a live televised webcast to the entire state of Kentucky to talk about what's going on in Marion County Public Schools. So what a cool day for him to be there, talking about technology. And that's his area that he oversees at the Department of Education. And I listed it, and you can see from the chart, our teachers will be participating in the technology. But what I think makes us so unique about this day is that we look at every job skill in our district and we provide professional growth opportunities for each and every person. So from bookkeepers to our Family Resource Center directors, even to our cafeteria. We want next Tuesday to be a day where everyone grows. And then when you get down to the sessions, as you can see, this is a true conference-like setting that Marion County Public School employees are actually presenting. Now, we have invited some guests. We've got some people from around the state and they want to come and see what we're doing. But as you can see, our staff, they have an opportunity to participate in a conference setting without traffic. It's homegrown. When we talk about growing leaderships, that's the best way to do it. And we have over 30 sessions that involve technology and integrating that into the classroom. So I'm not going to go through and read, nor am I going to ask anyone to decide which item he would like to do. But you know, that's pretty exciting that we have staff that are willing to share and willing to teach. And last year, we had a great day. I have no doubt that next Tuesday will be a great day. I think it is awesome that we are going to have folks from the Department of Education that are there to see what we're doing. Because we don't just talk about a big dream, we make that big dream happen. And that's what sets Marion County apart. So very pleased with the progress that we're making on that. And I think I have reported before, we have about 2,000 Chromebooks in our district and that doesn't count our desktops and our iPads and some other things like that. But what we've got to do is continue to work on ensuring that our staff is basically keeping up with our kids. Because most of you all would probably agree, if your phone messes up or your iPad messes up, what do you do? You hand it to your child and say, "Why is it doing this?" That's what I do at my house. "Well, it's on low power mode, Mom." And that's why it keeps going back to your screen saying, "Oh, okay, I'll take it off that." So just trying to keep up with that. The next big dream is about market connect and communicate. And I think that's what we do all the time. I'm working, I'm a part of Leadership Lebanon this year. So excited to be connecting with the people in the community. And just like tonight, that's an example of communicating. We have an audience here tonight. I'd like to thank the parents for coming out and supporting their students, the teachers being here. Y'all did a fantastic job. And that goes right along with the next big dream, which is next generation Marion County. And you all are a part of that next generation. We have a Young Leaders Conference that's scheduled for March the 18th. So if you'll notice, we're trying to do things in our district so that folks don't have to lead, so that we can grow leaders right here in Marion County. Our Leadership Now Phase Two, we created that so we can have a more intense study for potential principals and administrators in our district. And our student leaders will actually be a part of our Innovative Institute on Tuesday. So they will actually be leading and helping with that. All students graduate college and career-ready. I hope you all have heard, and if you haven't, but we actually have a lot more local control for our Area Technology Center. Ms. McGrady's here and she is our new principal in that facility. And if you don't know her, you need to get to know her because she's going to help us lead the way to make sure that our children have an opportunity to be prepared for a technical world that we go into. Her and her staff have visited middle schools, both in Marion and Washington County. She's out recruiting kids. They, I'll jump down, we did a senior survey before Christmas break and we talked to every senior at Marion County High School. And we wanted to ask them, "What's your plans? What are you planning to do?" And just, I just included one bullet because I could include a lot. But out of the children we surveyed, and again, one-on-one individuals, myself and a student, we had a lot of people having a lot of conversation. Seventy percent of our kids said they plan to attend a post-secondary institution. Twenty percent of those kids say they plan to participate in a technical education. So, and we asked questions for everything from, "Have you applied?" Because if they hadn't applied, we wanted to help them apply. "Have you filled out your FASB form?" Because if maybe they don't have an older brother or sister who've ever gone to college and maybe they don't, never filled out a FASB form. We want to be the people that help the kids make those kinds of things happen. So again, have lots of data. And one of the things we want to do, and Ms. McGrady is helping us do that, is to share that data with business and industry. They are desperate for employees, employees that are skilled. So we've got to give them the data. Who are we looking at? So if 70% of our seniors are thinking about going to some kind of post-secondary institution, and now mind you, some of those kids said, "I'm going to work and go to college." So not all of them just said, "I'm going to go to that traditional four-year route." We have 30% of our kids that say they're ready to go into the workforce. So we want to help those children get into the workforce and get them placed in a job. So really pleased about that. As you can see, we have children taking dual credit courses. We have about half of our senior classes college and career-ready. And we want to make sure that that's all students. Last but not least, under communication, I was asked to participate in the implementation of a grant with the End Leader 21 Conference that is actually about creating opportunities for adults and schools to understand what it is we need to do to help children be college and career-ready. And we want to do that in an equitable fashion. So I'm very excited about the possibility of representing Marion County Public Schools and also representing the state of Kentucky. On our non-traditional school days, we've currently missed two full days and we've had a one-hour delay. And I know there's been a lot of questions about that. So one of the things I asked Theresa to do is actually pull up our school calendar. And we've actually completed 92 days and we have 82 days remaining. So if you scroll down, as you can see, our last day of school had been planned for the 17th for students. So we have missed two school days. So you can see where we are on the calendar. We've already got some things built in there. We can actually use President's Day as a makeup. That would be a possibility of doing. And then we also have the ability to use our non-traditional instructional school day. We have sent home packets in some cases for some lessons. And then some items will be done online. I know you've probably received a lot of questions about non-traditional school day. I don't think there's anything that replaces the interaction between a teacher and a student. And so we really value that. When we started this, I said nothing replaces that and I'm going to use those very sparingly. I don't want that to be the first thing we do because again, there's no replacement for that interaction. But as you can see, in about, I think we figured out in about 13 days, we could get over into the month of June. Last year, we didn't have a lot of snow days. Four years ago, we had 18. Am I right?
A lot.
We started Plan B that first year. So you know, once we start getting into anything over seven missed days, that's when we're probably going to start looking at those non-traditional school days. It's just kind of a, you know, you just don't want to do that too often because you don't want to replace the teacher. But also, when you start getting into that month of June, graduation, Memorial Day, at least we have that, at least we have that as an option. So, and if anybody has any questions, you're more than welcome to call the office, to call your school principal. So, and if anybody has any questions, you're more than welcome to call the office, to call your school principal. But we're going to try to put that off as long as possible because we want kids with teachers in the classroom. We are a distinguished school district. We have a number of students that do really well on scholarships and lots of awards and successes. And that's because we have great teachers and great staff. And as much as we can have them in the classroom, that's what we want to do. But in the event that we have a major catastrophe or we have really bad weather, at least we have this option. So another couple of items to address under communication is charter school discussion. I know Senator Hickman's here and that's something that Kentucky's looking at. Charter school has been something that a lot of other states have already been working on. And from what the data tells us, that students who struggle and sometimes live in poverty, charter schools can make a really big difference. There's still a lot of discussion about how that's going, you know, whether it'll happen and if it does, how that will be successfully implemented. Regardless of whether we have charter schools in Kentucky or not, we're going to really believe achieved in Marion County Public Schools. We have been really trying to work with the senators and the representatives to make sure that if this actually comes to be, that we are partners. Am I saying that right, Jimmy? We want to be partners because ultimately, it's about all the kids of the Commonwealth of Kentucky being successful. So we just want to have a good plan and good partnership. And so as those details get worked out, I'll definitely keep everyone up to date. Senate Bill One, I've been told, is probably what we need to really be looking at because Senate Bill One will address the new federal education system, which is the ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act. If you're not a part of the education world, we have a thousand acronyms. And I'm going to try to do really good to make sure that I don't always use those acronyms. But Senate Bill One will address that. And that will bring about some change for the accountability system, bring about some change for the evaluation system and the interventions. So we're reading about that. We want to make sure that we are ready to start that school year because our objective is for every student to succeed in Marion County Public Schools. Do want to update the board members about our nurses contract. A couple of years ago, we had an opportunity to have a nurse in every building. And you know, sometimes when you get accustomed to that, you don't remember what that was like. But there was a time that there was not a nurse in every building. I can remember when I was at the high school, we had a nurse in the building, but we had to share our nurse with St. A. Or they had to go to Lebanon Elementary. And the other nurses were shared. So this year, we tried something different. We are working and we have all of our nurses in our buildings. And so far, for reimbursement, we brought in $122,000. The total cost of the program is $254,000. So we're hoping with that reimbursement through Medicaid, we can actually pay for that program. But I think if you're a parent and your child's had to go to the office because they've not been feeling well, that's something that you really, really appreciate and glad that we have that. Again, we have 82 days that remain. We only have 11 weeks until spring break. That'll be here before you know it. 14 weeks until the state accountability and only 17 weeks until the last day of school. Eighty-two days to ensure that all of our students have an opportunity to make their dreams come true. So that's what we're doing every day. Anybody have any questions?